We never had seven people in a meeting before.
You guys want to start the minutes?
Oh, yeah. It's in the middle box.
Have you read them yet?
Make motion to move them into the test minutes.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? So you're done? Oh, favor. I abstained because I wasn't here. Okay. Update of potential zoning, this is you.
Mr. Chairman. You're on. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Many of you saw me. I was at the last meeting, Adam Lamont, municipal management fellow with the town of Templeton. Lori Weida, development services director. Tom Harrington, town council. We're here tonight, as you know, we've been in talks with prospective marijuana establishments that want to come to Templeton. If I can, I'm just going to go up to the map here. And the two places that we're looking at, or the two locations that these prospective establishments are looking at for cultivation, is actually in two zonings, one of which is in the highway business zoning and then the village district zoning. Cultivation is limited under light manufacturing, which on this zoning that we have in town pertains only to the commercial industrial. So it's very specific and very limited. I just wanted to kind of give you a visual so you could see the challenge that we have working with this new industry in Massachusetts. Templeton voted in favor. And this gives us enough opportunity, enough time, to work with the planning board. You know, we had the 65 days before town meeting. We want you to be a part of the process. We wanted to come down, discuss this challenge that we're facing with the planning board, and we just hope that we could think more broadly, if you will, in addressing this issue that we have facing us. And I do have Tom Harrington here tonight, town council, who's going to explain more in depth legally on the issue. And with that, I'll give it to Tom.
Thanks, Adam. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Tom Harrington, town council. So I've been tasked with drafting a bylaw amendment to... You can look at this two ways. You could say it's to allow two prospective marijuana operations that are proposed for town, but I actually look at it a little differently in that I think what we're looking to do is...
Allow light manufacturing.
What's that?
Allow light manufacturing.
Well, not so much that. I would... So I guess if I'm not taking any advice, I'd do it as an overlay. I want to know how this board wants to think about it because, you know, I think the key is we're looking for your support at town meeting, so we need to figure out a way to satisfy you that you like what we're doing. But so the way I would propose doing it, however, is as an overlay district. Because currently, right, so we know that the town on the 2016 ballot question was in favor of recreational marijuana. We've got that. So if we wanted to prohibit it throughout the whole town, we'd need to do two things. We'd need to hold another ballot question and get a majority vote of the town on that, prohibiting it in town, and then we'd have to get a two-thirds vote on a zoning amendment, prohibiting it throughout town. So those could be two tough votes to get. And we're already operating with the fact that the town did vote in favor. Okay, so without a zoning bylaw, it is arguably allowed. So a retail operation would be allowed anyplace else, a retail store of a typical ilk would be allowed. So I think currently it might be, for a retail operation, and I'm talking about a sales operation, it might be too broad in town. I think we maybe have too many places that someone could open up a retail facility, and I think what we want to do here is squeeze that to the exact locations that the town would like to see it or is okay with it, and prohibit the rest of town. So that's for a retail operation. For a grow operation, yeah, I think a grow operation lines up most specifically with like a light industrial. We know it's not agriculture. The state has told us that a grow operation should not be considered an agricultural use because if it were agricultural use, it could go anywhere, right? So we do have it limited to light manufacturing, but honestly, that's just state guidance right now. We don't have any cases on point, you know, since it's such a new law. We don't, you know, the lawyer doesn't have any book to run to and point to and say, here, that's the answer. So we're winging it a little bit. My best judgment is that it's limited to light industrial, but that could open up. You know, we could get another town prohibiting it in a retail district and a court saying, no, no, it's not that much different than a retail operation let it in. It's like a greenhouse or whatever. So that's why my approach for the town would be to do this as an overlay. And by overlay, what I'm saying is if you literally took like a sheet and overlaid it on that map, we would just cut out those parcels that we think it's okay to put this operation in. So it can be limited to two parcels, it can be four parcels, it can be a specific district, it can be part of a specific district, and I think this is where, at least I need your guidance on where it might be appropriate and where it's not appropriate, so that we can get that kind of right from the start before we go into town meeting. So in addition to the overlay, my suggestion would be that a retail or a grow operation would come to this board for a special permit. That way, you know, they clear the first hurdle, we've already said the parcel in question is suitable for this operation, but you're still getting a look at the operation. You can look at the safety, you can look at the ingress and egress, traffic, the parking, how they're operating, when they're opening, when they're closing, you know, maybe something like making it reservation only if they, you know, kind of go above a certain amount of visitors. So, you know, so putting your stamp on it so that, you know, it's a successful business, we hope, but it's not going to be a nuisance to whatever neighbors they happen to have. So that would be my approach, and I guess after this kind of... So I'm mostly here to listen to figure out what this board thinks. Once I get your feedback, what I'd like to do is then go and draft you a bylaw that you can look at and, you know, come back out again, we can go through it, we can talk about what you like, what you don't like, how it works, how it doesn't work, and get you to the point where you're comfortable with it. And then we can kind of start moving it through the process. But, you know, I'm happy to go into greater detail on any of these things, but I'd love to hear how you might imagine this working in town.
Do you have... Is it two different uses? I mean, I know it's... They both want to manufacture and retail on the same locations?
No. So there's the one that's going into the school.
Right.
Right? That's strictly a grow operation.
Okay.
Okay, so no retail associated with that.
Okay.
Which cuts way down on the traffic and neighborhood impacts and that sort of thing. The Royalston Farm, which is in...
Highway Business.
Highway Business. So he started out asking for a retail license.
Which one's this?
Royalston Farm is the name of the applicant.
Where is it?
Do you read it? Royalston Farm LLC?
Where is it?
Where's the location?
Oh, no, it's near... It's on Gardner Road. It's actually in the highway.
Oh, Valley Forest. Oh, okay. All right. I'm looking for the location.
Okay. Right, so you have Valley Forests.
And that's highway business company, correct? Valley Forests?
Right. So, yeah, so he could arguably come in without the retail.
Yes.
His retail... Well, I think both, actually.
What does he look into? Both?
So he started out with just retail. And we had our meeting because before he can come apply to the board, he needs to sign what's called a host community agreement with the selectmen. So that's his... You know, before he can apply to the state for his license, he needs this HCA to show the state that the town's interested in his operation. So we're, you know, we... No agreements yet, but we're talking about the terms of an agreement and what that might look like. So in our last meeting, he rolled out the idea that, so his grow facility is in Royalston, his retail would be in Templeton, but he may be interested in either bringing his grow operation from Royalston to Templeton or opening up a second grow operation. I think it's early days for him, and I don't know that he's kind of decided what he wants to do. But we are entertaining the idea that it could be a retail in front. He'd pick up another piece that's, I think, directly behind the florist and put a greenhouse there. And just, and I'm sure you all know this, but a grow operation is always indoors. It's a fairly sophisticated and very secure facility. It's not a field, you know, it's always properly canopied and, you know, has the proper amount of security.
Yeah. Just for clarity, I'm hearing both of you, but Adam, you kept saying the issue that you're looking for this board to help with. What's the issue?
The issue is, right now, the current zoning is so restrictive on the light manufacturing and the zoning pertaining to what the town has adopted, essentially making it very restrictive to anybody that wants to go into the cultivation field with the new industry of marijuana.
Because our light manufacturing is strictly in the CIA districts. So why don't we just relabel the highway business for light manufacturing?
Well, so that would... So I think that...
I don't like spot zoning. It's just too... Every time somebody wants to do something in town, they gotta go to town meeting to get a vote to see if you can change your parcel and change my parcel. It's me, me, me. I don't like it. I like... If you're going to do it, do it by descriptive parcels. The reason why we zoned the town that way... Don't forget, this board is the one that zoned this town in 2006.
Right.
So, okay, I respect listening to your conversation, but we know everything you're talking about when it comes to zones and why, because we labeled it, all right? So we can get all that stuff right out of the way. But me personally, I don't like spot zoning, and if you're going to label a district for a certain thing, label the district.
That's fine.
That's the way I'm looking at it.
Yeah.
I think this makes it an even playing field for the whole town or any businessman or business person that's into town and wants to come to town. I mean, the schools, going to be your biggest battle because it's in a village district, so there's going to have to be some kind of verbiage. That could be the only overlay you could do unless you want to open up the light manufacturing in the village districts.
Well, so that's, I think, the key change anyways, is for the school that the town is selling, that's not in a district that would allow a grow facility. Right. So we're going to need to change the zoning there.
Yeah, you're saying we're going to need to, you know, that this is like a foregone conclusion. I mean, we have the zoning for a reason. I'm not sure we want to open the village district to light manufacturing. That has an impact.
No, that would have to be... That specific location would have to be an overlay. That would be the only way you get away with the town being able to...
You're talking about the school?
Developers.
Because we wouldn't want to open the village district to light.
Right. I was specifically speaking for the highway business. Commercial industrial's already got it, but with the highway business areas, you would think, you know, as far as retail, it's no different than across the street over there, as far as I'm concerned. Whether you stop there, you stop the street for a bag of chips or whatever, you want to pick up some pot or whatever they're selling these days, I don't know. But they're going to be like package stores.
Which is...
And so why can it only go on one side of town? That's like prohibition to me. I don't believe in it.
Oh, yeah, and it's not my suggestion that it can only go on one side of town, but I do think you want to be aware of, you know, so we probably want to have a certain distance from schools built into our, right? That's not there.
The state mandates 500 feet.
Right.
Right now.
We might be comfortable with 500, we might want 750.
Why? If anything broken, don't fix it. I mean, why? I mean, then you just... To me, you're just like catering to one person or two people. Just leave it alone. I mean, the state already did it.
Is that a cultivation and retail?
Yeah.
500 feet?
500 feet.
I believe it is.
I don't know if it was...
500 feet. And it's up to the town if they want to lighten a restriction. You don't have to add to it. The town can lighten a restriction if they want. They want to say, you know, we can go 300 feet.
No, I'm okay. I should know if it pertains to both.
Right. Because we've gone to some of the campus control commission meetings myself, and so I'm very well versed on it because we knew what was coming in. But it's not that 500, so let's do more. I mean, we can say, we don't even want the 500, but we're going to keep it at 100 feet or keep it by case by case. It's entirely up to the town.
So we're proposing or suggesting that the highway business, the parts in yellow, that we just add that as an additional use?
As far as for light manufacturing, because that would allow it to be done at like the one down the street.
Exactly.
The school, the elementary school or the former elementary school in Bolonsville...
In the village district. That's a problem.
Because really going to be the biggest thing is that's village district. So that would be, to me, my right out of the gate, all 10 minute conversation here, would be the safe way to do that in a village, opening the villages up for light manufacturing would be to do an overlay just for that one spot.
Do we have...
To me, that'd be the simplest.
I'd say an overlay, you're saying.
For just that one location.
Yeah, I would say that would be the best.
So the town can dispose of that. Put that school to good use.
Would the board want to issue a special permit for a marijuana facility?
I think they would have to, just as far as to see what's going on in the parking with laws, and if we still do site plan review.
Yeah. Right. But this wouldn't be site plan review, this would be a special permit.
Right.
So I guess my advice would still be an overlay district, just include all of the yellow in the overlay district. And consider in the purple, is... Do you want to open the whole thing up to retail? Are there areas you want to...
It's already allowed.
Right.
All our commercial industrial is just that. It's already allowed.
Yes.
The only thing that's not allowed in commercial industrial is residents. That's it. If it's a legal use in the Commonwealth, it can go in the commercial industrial zones. Because when we first zoned in '06, there was a... What? We ended up having to go back, I think it was a year or two later, because the GFA wanted to put a building down, wanted to build in Bolonsville in the village district with the old Tom, former Tom's Pizza Bar it used to be, for all you people that remember that. And the building inspector had to turn him down because it was a commercial building and it was within the residential area. No, he looked at it as it was a village in that... The way his interpretation was that we didn't allow that type of business in the village, in that district. So we ended up having to go back and change it around to say, basically, everything's allowed in... That's what basically opened our eyes. They wanted to do it... Sorry, it wasn't that location. There was a talk of a bank going down on exit 19. And they said, being that you listed the banks are a use within the village district, that's what it was. It might not have been GFA now that I rethink that. Being that you said it was allowed in this district but not in this district, where I'm looking at it as if it's not allowed in the commercial, I mean, commercial industrial zones. So we went back to the floor and said, if it's a legal use allowed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's automatically allowed in our commercial industrial zones. Because we didn't want to have to say, take out the book, oh, we forgot to list it. If it's allowed over here, does that mean it's not allowed over here? Because we didn't list it. We were too broad, so we basically tightened it up and said, if it's allowable use, it's allowed in the commercial industrial zones, just for that reason.
So retail or manufacturing can happen in it?
Retail, manufacturing, you name it, is allowed in our purple zones, anything.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could guess ask the question. You're saying, basically, on the highway business to basically add the light manufacturing and then do the overlay for 16 schools per year?
Yeah. To me, it'd be as simple as and clean as because it's already allowed in the commercial industrial zones. And the RA1, RA1, 2s and 5, it's already described as, you know, minor major home occupation. That's about your max.
And that's what we really...
That's already spelt out by itself.
And that's why we came over tonight, because we wanted to even see if you were open to it. We wanted to hear what you have to say. Obviously, we're going to be working alongside this process moving forward, but this is just the introduction.
Me personally, I don't care if it's marijuana or if it's titanium or whatnot, I just don't like him saying, oh, this guy can do this thing in this spot.
Can I add to that, too, is that we've denied many businesses access to the town based on the zoning. So have we set a precedent in the past? And are we doing the right thing to set a precedent that, hey, someone wants to come in, new business in town, and they want a specific location that we've already zoned? Like, we denied Dunkin' Donuts a drive-through, you know, because they're in the village. It is what it is. That's the zoning. Go somewhere else. They went somewhere else. So why are we looking at a new business who's specifically suggesting to come into some, a zone that is not zoned appropriately? When there are other areas that are zoned appropriately.
The third location wanted to come in and say like the RA2.
This all came together because of the town's RFP request for the elementary school? And that was just one of the proposals?
Yeah, I know, but...
Three uses of buildings, otherwise it's going to look like the funeral school up there with just a bunch of boarded up buildings on a town.
I understand that. But I'm just saying, we're looking, we're doing every business all the time, and we need to not... We need to decide if we're... If that's the way we can work it, if we want to be business friendly and change the laws to help the business, then fine. But if we do it once or twice, and someone's going to come in here and they're going to want an exception, why wouldn't they?
Well, it is a new industry. I think all of us, this is a learning... I mean, we're all... And we're looking at the maps and we're, you know, we're seeing our frustrations, and we want to make sure that we do the best we can, especially with the new industry coming into Massachusetts.
Oh, yeah.
So I think with what Tom's covered tonight, Lori and I have been working together closely, and we want to make sure that you're a part of this process.
So let me make sure I've got the sense, so...
Well, that's just my opinion. Everybody else is trying to, too.
Yeah, I'd like to hear everybody else's thought.
Were you referring to your bylaw for some reason?
Well, I'm curious in the comment that if it's allowed in the Commonwealth, it's allowed in our zone.
We meant as far... I use, maybe use Commonwealth, I'm just saying as far as any possible use that's not residence is our interpretation was it was allowed in the commercial industrial zones. In no way is it going to say in the Commonwealth in our reds.
So when Mr. Charterer said, but we denied businesses, so that wasn't in those zones? It sounds like...
In the village district specifically, we denied some.
Every business that has, you know, it's either an allowable use or it's a special permit or it's not allowed.
Right.
Depending on the business, depending on the zone.
But he was referring to Dunkin' Donuts in Bolonsville. There was a church there, and they felt real confident, they tried to petition right after the fact it didn't work because the planning board asked to be the ones that presents a zone change on town floor. Talking with the planning board, you can't do it. But they built around our zoning. We didn't zone around their buildings, so they didn't have an argument. I stood on the curb and talked to the people in corporate and said, you can build a Dunkin's here, but you can't have a drive-through. Because that's the way our village district bylaws are writ. You have a drive-through for a bank but not fast food, that's considered fast food. And so they opted to build a thing, and I know they even made provisions within the walls to kick it out for a drive-through, like, you know, when you're building it. They were confident that they were just going to rally the troops and get a petition going. It doesn't work that way. By the way, once again, it was no heartfelt issues on my end, because like I said, they built around the zoning, we didn't zone around their building. And that's the village. We're basically trying to protect the villages from... It's really to encourage pedestrian traffic and so on and so forth, but that's a whole other story. But the school's definitely a separate animal as far as it's not your normal, somebody wants to come in, like Christoph said, and do a certain business within an area that's not allowed. Sometimes you have to say no, but just we have this big leahemeth on top of this hill, and I'd love to see somebody putting that to work.
We're honestly surprised when we found out the zoning didn't match.
So...
Well, it's a new industry. I mean, so...
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I didn't know whether you had something in particular you wanted to question.
No, 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 I was just trying to...
Tom's always doing research.
He was trying to catch me in one of my rants, if I was telling the truth.
And I think it's new... I mean, I think we're covered because it's a new industry, like, as far as, you know, if we... You know, there's a big difference between a new legal entity coming into Massachusetts versus like a used car lot or something like that. So I think we're covered as far as people that we've denied in the past. I would put an overlay district across wherever we want it to include the yellow.
If it's saying... The only overlay district we need to do is the school in Bolonsville.
Yeah.
Because, and just allow light manufacturing within the highway business, but it's already allowed in the commercial industrial. So therefore, it opens up everything except for the villages for light manufacturing. That's, I think that's the safest thing to do.
I agree with what Curtis is saying. There's something that wants to, potentially wants to go into the school. The zoning doesn't match. We do an overlay, which means we have to look at it, we have to make a determination, and then we have to decide whether we want it there or not. We're just not going to open it up and say that light manufacturing can come into the village.
Right.
But everything else that's in yellow, I agree, we should, we would rezone that for the...
Just add it into the...
Just add it.
Just add light manufacturing.
Add light manufacturing to that. But anything that's in the village or anything like that still needs to be done under a special process. That way, we're just not saying you can't do it. We're saying we just want the chance to look at it, determine if it's right for... Well, what I say as a townspeople.
Townspeople need a way to...
Look at it, determine if it's right for the village.
By a special permit.
No, he's just talking about the overlay district in general, because the school's really a separate... It's a whole animal by itself.
No, I get it.
It's not just something that wants to do something down the street. It's like, there's other land to do it. This is a little bit different, it's kind of reversed. The school's already there, the building's already there.
Right.
Let's try to keep it on the map where it falls down.
Right. Yeah, no, the intention there is to match the zoning to the... It's not going to be a school anymore, it's got to be something.
Right.
Right. And I think there's only so many uses for a building like that.
In a residential district, yeah.
In a residential district. If somebody has a thought process where they can use the building and the town can benefit, I think we should look at it.
So why would that not be a special permit rather than an overlay district?
Because you can't change, you can't allow it, or it's not allowed. We can't circumvent the...
Allowed uses.
Yep.
But I think we're saying a couple of different things, though. So it's... So this, an overlay district allows this use wherever you want it, and that can be in, you know, in yellow?
I'm talking... Are we talking two different things? You're talking about the marijuana grow facility, I'm talking about overlay district as a light, turn that building into light manufacturing as by description.
I think that's the same thing.
Well, not really, because I don't... That building shouldn't be earmarked for the rest of its life as marijuana growing. So what I'm saying is, we just changed, if we just did an overlay of the zone allowable use, then it's allowed within that zone.
So you want to change the zone, the school to... So you want to make it like a little...
Little dock. If you want, we can go down, get to the fire station, just to make that little block from the top of the hill down, it's all town properties.
But just so you know, too, Mr. Chairman, there are not... It's not just one parcel at that site, there's actually three, I believe, three or maybe four parcels. There's actually three, I believe, three or maybe four parcels.
Yeah, there's a house in there between the school and the fire department.
Okay, well, even just do, just the property itself.
The parcels.
But turn the parcel itself in question into light manufacturing. I mean, yeah, light manufacturing.
So is there a concern that, so then you're.
That's definitely a spot zone.
I'm not concerned about the spot zoning component, because as long as the town has legitimate planning purpose for what it's doing, and this is a legitimate planning purpose, it's not spot zoning.
Right.
It might be a small zoning district, but it's not spot zoning. But I guess my concern is, by opening it up to light industrial, are we, and understanding that there's a number of residences in the vicinity, are we making that use too broad for what surrounds that school?
Which gives this town the greatest control, special or spot zoning? Or not spot zoning, but zoning is special for that.
I think an overlay district gives you more control.
Gives the town greater control.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's specific, it, it's, the overlay district will be specific to a marijuana facility. So we're going to define what a marijuana facility is, we're going to define what it is not.
Okay.
We're going to say, and we're going to say, this is where it is eligible to go. Before it goes there, it's going to have to come to this board for a special permit so that you can look at the ABCs of the operation, you know, and partly because, again, this is, this is new, you know. We're all babies here. And I want, I'm happy to loosen control over time, but I don't want to be in the position where the industry changes significantly and we don't have the controls in place.
Right.
I get your point about not wanting to pick and choose, you know, winning parcels and losing parcels, which is why I'm comfortable putting it wherever you tell me to put it. But once we decide that that parcel is eligible, I still want this board looking at the application, looking at how it's going to operate, and making sure you're comfortable with that. And once we get a couple under our belt, if we do get a couple under our belt, I think then the board can say, all right, we've been through it, it's not a big deal. You know, let's lighten up on the special permit or change this or that. But I wouldn't want to start there, I'd rather start here and go there.
Am I understanding correctly, the overlay would designate that only for a cultivation facility?
No. The overlay would designate it in addition to what the underlying zoning is. So you're not taking away any of the opportunities from the underlying zone. The overlay would make it eligible for a marijuana facility, and there's a bunch of different marijuana facilities, right? It can be a grow facility, it can be a testing facility, it can be a retail facility, it can be a craft cultivation facility. So, and you know, and they keep, you know, as soon as probably going to be a cafe facility.
Right. So the overlay then designates it as a marijuana facility.
Eligible for.
Eligible as a marijuana facility.
Right.
If in five years they go away, then the only thing that could conceivably go in there without any further input from the town is a marijuana facility?
No.
Or the previous.
Whatever the underlying zoning allows.
Well, okay. Anything that's allowed in the village or a marijuana facility.
Yes.
They couldn't decide they want to build widgets in there.
Right.
And just say, okay, because there was a facility, a marijuana facility here before, we can now put widgets in here.
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right, I buy that.
Can we be specific about the type of facility that we would allow?
You can. So you can, you can, and I'll define, you know, the state, you probably got this at your CCC thing, but the state defines six or seven different types of facility. You know, the obviousest ones are grow.
Right.
Retail, testing, because it all has to be tested before it can go to retail. And there's cultivation and processing.
Manufacturing.
And, you know, a few more. So yes, we could say that in, in the red district, you know, for like, for instance, on the school parcel, if we just do that on the school parcel, it's eligible for manufacturing, it's not eligible for retail. You know, so just limit it that way. So in this one, that's it.
The first three that you cited probably would be fairly acceptable, but if it went for a cafe or sales, it might be more objectionable because of the area that it's located.
And that's why I want the board to have the authority to say, not comfortable with that.
Okay.
And then, and so cafes are in the testing phase now, right?
Yeah, but.
They haven't been rolled out, but.
Who knows what will come?
Yeah. We don't, we don't know how they're going to go.
You would have the control.
I pitched taste testing in the future.
If I go, well, it reminds me of pictures, remind me to bring my cell phone and my laptop when I leave.
So I guess, so if I, I'll take a crack at what I think you want. So how, so, but I could really use some help on, so yellow and purple is good for kind of most of the operations?
Well, the yellow's going to have to be changed for light manufacturing.
Why wasn't it, why didn't we allow light manufacturing in the highway business district to begin with? I wasn't here, but you guys remember?
There was more geared towards retail. I don't have it in front of me, I don't know, it's been a while, but. I don't believe light manufacturing is allowed in the highway business. I'd have to look at.
So why don't we, why would we add that? Why don't we just, the only thing that's added is.
Just do the overlay.
The grow facility. Because honestly, it's not, you know, what we do.
Do what? Do you just do that overlay in the yellow and purple, what do you say?
Yellow, purple in the school.
Trust him.
Where, yeah, I mean, I kind of, I more agree with you, that we should, if we're going to change, make a zoning change, let's make a zoning change that would apply to other light manufacturers. Because otherwise, a light manufacturer comes in here and says, well, you let this guy do it, and you just made his own little overlay, why can't I do it?
So let me just give you a little piece of information. So the whole idea that a grow facility is like light manufacturing, the only reason it gets classified then is because the state wanted towns to know, if you don't do a zoning bylaw, this is coming. And it can, and if it's a, and if it's a grow facility, it can be anywhere you allow light manufacturing. And if it's a retail facility, it can be anywhere you want, or anywhere you allow retail facility. But it's probably a lot less intrusive than a typical light manufacturing. It's, you know, it's a greenhouse, and it's going to be completely enclosed, and, you know, kind of all the work's going on inside. I mean, as a better example, the school, the school facility, and that's where they want to do it. You're really not going to hear or know what's going on inside that building. It's just grow lights and plants, you know, it's not machines whirring as we typically think of a light manufacturing operation. So changing the yellow to light manufacturing might be a step farther than you want to go. And I, so I would suggest, again, I would try the overlay, and if you like it there, and say, you know what? This is okay, maybe we can add a few more light manufacturing use or open it up to light manufacturing. It seems to be a good location for this.
Well, the town doesn't have. The voters sometimes seem to be just like stuck with just the way it is, leave it. So if you're going to go to the floor and change something, you think it all through, and you don't say, we can do that next time. Next time sometimes is just too damn hard to do. So we need to think it, this board needs to think it as a long-term for the town is something we do. The overlay is a quick way, we're only strictly talking about that use. Where we want to allow, I mean, we want to allow light manufacturing, there's not a lot of highway businesses.
I would say we already decided not to do it when we did zoning, so let's just do the overlay across those, the yellow, the purple, and that small village. Because we decided when we did the zoning a long time ago not to allow light manufacturing. So I see that as a step backwards.
In all my reading, the light manufacturing that's involved with a grow facility, it's packaging and shipping. None of what's grown in a grow facility is going to be sold out of the building. It's all packed, it's all sent out.
Yeah.
And light manufacturing includes a lot of different things. So why is it not being treated more like agricultural?
Yeah.
It's just farming.
You get a right to farm by law in town. Everybody, every single, the whole town could grow pot.
You know, honestly.
That's the answer.
We might get more done.
That's why they get it. You got it, Charlie.
Look, because logic left the room, and so we're left with, not me, but a lot of crazy lawyers trying to think of ways to put a round peg in a square hole. And so that, you know, it's clearly agricultural, but we're trying to, we're trying to avoid stepping on landmines. And we know we all, we want it to occur all inside for safety, so we just move it into light manufacturing. But it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of round pegs and square holes here because we're trying to be very cautious with this. And I think someone said, and I agree, you know, in five years, we're probably all going to be a lot more comfortable with it, and it'll be more like a package store, but we're not there yet.
The state insists on it being illegal.
Well, that's a.
The banks aren't doing business with this.
It's another key point.
Well, so are.
President said credit.
No. But still, it's a, that's a fact.
The population's not going to get smarter, so I don't think it's going to change.
You're not wrong.
That's what we're talking about. You know, you were talking about, we got an issue, the issue is bringing in a federally illegal business into our town. I'm not sure that's, I don't think I'm necessarily supportive personally, but.
And yet, the state is telling us, if you don't zone for it, it can go anywhere.
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense.
It's on the state.
So, I mean, valued points, I mean, maybe the overlay's not that bad. I mean, if you look at it that way, John had a good point, he said, we zone it that way, people aren't busting out doors out to do any light manufacturing in the highway business anyways, because there's not many parcels actually big enough to do it.
Yep.
Ice cream on one side of the street?
Yeah, imagine that, ice cream on one side and weed on the other.
I think that's called synergy.
Pot on one side and munchies across the road.
You guys only.
Across the road.
Things refined. Things refined for many years.
I think the overlay.
I think I got a sense.
Yeah. The overlay with the yellow, the orange, and, sorry, the yellow, the purple in the school.
I just like a good debate.
Yeah.
You got to do it.
You have to think from both sides.
Yeah, you got to.
Yeah.
Is there any, is there any risk of showing favoritism to a particular business if we do this?
Not the overlay.
Not if we do overlay?
But.
So if I come in with a new industry like robotics, and I say I want to put a robotics thing in village district, it's brand new, you didn't overlay for the pot, it's a new business, I like you didn't overlay for me, are we okay with that?
I'd say go to the state and start it down.
Yeah, I mean, we're taking something that's, I mean, marijuana is a new business, because it was illegal. It's a new industry that wasn't allowed. Robotics would be allowed in our manufacturing, would be allowed in our commercial manufacturing area.
Prostitution or something.
Like prostitution would be a perfect example.
But you know what, you know, tattoo parlors and adult bookstores, you know, we got the message that if we prohibit them, they can go anywhere. So every town, you know, creates their little.
We have our own little.
Pocket where it can go. And so, and so, and there's, there is that element to all of this too, right? Because we're kind of getting the same read from them. If you don't, if you don't address it, then it can go anywhere, so.
So, does everybody, is that kind of the direction of the day?
I said I would follow the rule of the world, but anybody's thinking.
I think if you put it that way, as far as the overlay, that's the way it works. Like I said, I think that's probably, that's probably the best way to go.
All right.
It's probably easier to take it away too, if we ever needed to.
So you'll write something?
I will. I'll get you something. I think I can get it to you next week, and then you, you know, chew it over, and I'm happy to come out at your, you know, pleasure and.
Well, whenever you guys feel you got it, you know, wrapped, I mean, it's not a, I don't think we're going to get it on. When's fall town, are we looking to try and get a special town meeting?
I think it's October 20th or November sometime, but what is that? Is that early? I believe that's the tentative.
How soon does the.
It's earliest.
So you'll have to have.
See you next week.
What are you doing tomorrow? So you'll have to have a hearing on it, and so I think what will be, and you have 65 days to hold that hearing, but I think what we'll be looking for you to do is shorten that timeframe a little bit to maybe 45 days so that you can have your hearing, we can get your report.
This is something we're doing in a town, we're not doing it for a particular applicant.
Right.
You know, so it's.
Right. It's for the coffers.
And then the advertisements.
Yeah. We can work backwards. Yeah. Okay.
So consensus is good?
I've seen all the towns, the applicant, that's where the advertising, when he's coming from, because we don't have nothing in our budget. Great. So all the funds from across the hall, we actually, we have some right here from the selectman's office. Jeff, you want to sign your first voucher? Thank you.
So I, I think I've got my direction, and I thank you very much for your time and your ideas, and I'll get it out as fast as I can.
Well, as always, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board.
All right.
Appreciate your time, and see you soon.
We'll see you guys soon. All right, excellent. Um, we have number four discussion subjects, is that something?
Does anybody have anything?
Well, does anybody have anything? We have that and new business. They're kind of both the same. Basically, anybody anything to say?
Thank you. No.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Um, next meeting is August 27th. As of now, is there anything on that agenda? Should we not?
No, I'm in the office because I'm not as versed in planning as I should be. And I do have something in today that just needs some clarification.
All right, I'll take that.
So, yes, probably.
Okay. We just, we canceled it, so.
And, hmm, is the. So I'm going to have to talk to some of the screeners.
All right.
Any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second, all favor?
Yeah.
We're going.